You mean to kick off? Yeah.
Welcome, 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 welcome. How y'all doing? I really thought it was his turn first. I get to go first by welcoming you here and I'm glad to see you guys all showed out. The first thing on the agenda will be the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. I have a shorter report this month, just with this being summer. Some community highlights there, just some events that have happened between now and the last board meeting. A couple of spotlights that I would like to highlight. Tomorrow is our back-to-school event at Morehead Community Resource Center. It's our second annual back-to-school event. Courtney Modicet has gone above and beyond to prepare this year's event. So if you do have a chance to stop by Morehead tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00, I would encourage you to do so. This Friday, myself and Dr. Johnson from IPS will be speaking to the Circle City Rise Fellows to talk about the great things that are going on in our district. So I'm excited to share what we're doing here in Warren. Staff opening day is a week from today, July 26th. You will not be disappointed this year. We have Dr. Adolf Brown as our keynote speaker, and we're going to be celebrating a lot of successes that we've experienced over the last year. Following that staff opening day, we're doing our new teacher luncheon a little bit different. Board members in front of you, you have your invitation. So after the conclusion of the opening day ceremony, hopefully you'll be able to join us for the new teacher luncheon. I know Brian, Kate, and everyone have been working hard to redesign that this year so all of our new teachers can be in one location. And we start school one week from tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hanson. Our spotlight is Adrian Pettis, but he's not, I don't see him here, so what up? He's in the parking lot? Uh huh. Wow. We're going to be recognizing Chief Pettis with a plaque. Now, I got to decide whether I want to talk first or present the plaque and then give it to him and let him go to some talk. I think I'm gonna talk first. I met, first of all, you guys know, he used to be a part-time police officer in the district. Then, of course, became full-time and rose to the chief at a very young age. Wow. He was just a baby, 35 years old. Can you believe that? Probably the youngest in any of the districts as a district police officer, district chief. I met him when he became a full-time officer and was assigned to the Renaissance. I happened to be the dean over there, and he came along. And until that time, we were needing somebody to be able to de-escalate young men and women who needed to be talked to and handled in a different kind of a way than they were used to in that school. At the time, Officer Pettis, Chief Pettis, came in. And whenever we had a disturbance or an issue, he was very, he has a lot of empathy, okay? In those days, in the old days, we used to, when a kid really got unruly and out of hand, we'd actually put cuffs on them. I don't know if that was legal. I don't think it was, but that's how it was. When he came over, we stopped that. Because he showed us that you can bring people down just by talking to them and giving them your time and hearing what they've got to say. And that's what he did masterfully. And whenever we had an issue with a kid that we thought might get a little bit testy, I mean, very testy, he would be there to calm them down, talk to them, and talk them out of their issue. And then, not only just, you know, didn't send them back to class, or, yeah, to send them back to class, but would also follow up with them. And I saw that all the time, Adrian. Saw it all the time, saw that behavior all the time. So that was really great. And so they changed the way we used to do business over there. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that, that he was a combination of the two type of officers we've got in our district. It was a combination of that. And we only had one guy, and he was doing all of those services. I want to also say that since he's been with the district as the chief, you know, a lot of his SOPs, standard operating procedures, way we do business, were, of course, created by him, developed by him, and implemented, of course, and then became the model, the model for many of the communities that we work, that are here in the county. And so I want to give him great credit for that. Also, his relationship building skills were bar none. He connected with students, connected with community, connected with parents. And it was always a joy to see him in action whenever I had a chance, whether I was here or not. So I just want to say thank you for all you've done for us. It's unfortunate you're going to leave us, but you're going to talk to us about some of that.
Yes.
And I'd really like you to introduce your family as well.
Okay.
But before we do that, we got a plaque to give you, right? It says on, do I need this? It says, "On behalf of the MSD Warren Township School Board and District, Adrian Pettis Sr. is recognized for 10 years of exceptional service and leadership in ensuring the safety of our students, staff, and community." 2013, 2022, '23 correction. Adrian? Lord George, my friend.
Yes, yes. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, and the school board members. What, a few months ago, I would think I'd be sitting up here, talking about these things. But, well, first, I want to introduce my wife, Latina Pettis. She holds the fort down, so go ahead and stand up. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be able to accomplish all these great things I've did for the district. From her just assisting in the family life to work life, and also she worked for the district. She really has supported me through my adventure here. Wow. Well, first, I want to thank my team. My team is what I strive for. What I always say, "How can you help me help you be successful?" And I lead by that. You gotta take care of your team. And I think I did that. Dr. Hanson, you've been my leader. Thank you. From the late-night phone calls, when my wife is looking up at me, "Who are you talking to?" Hey, look, it's Tim. It's Tim talking to me. But a lot of those conversations that we did have, it was just more about, it wasn't just about work, it was more about family. Checking on me, making sure I was all right. I appreciate that. And also going to thank the district for allowing me to have this position. This is a high-ranking position. Like Dorsey just stated, that at one time, I was the youngest chief in the state of Indiana. I was 35. I was the one pursuing all the questions. So some chiefs were getting tired of me calling, because I was calling three, four times a day. "How do I do this? How do I do this? We got this going on." That's why I started off my career as being the chief. And then went from me seeking all the questions to the ones calling me, seeking me to answer those questions. So, once again, I want to thank the school board, thank MSD Warren Township. I thank y'all for the time that I had here. Where I'm going next, I wouldn't have been able to do that without my experience here. All right? If the ones don't know, I am going to University of Notre Dame. The reason why I did take that position, obviously, was better for my family. Things that, and it's from my hometown. All right, that's my hometown, from Melkart, Indiana. But this will be a, this will be another experience, you know, another chapter in my life. Taking now this season, right now, for me, as closed. But however, I'm going to be ready to start a new season. But this isn't goodbye, this is more, "See you later." Because I know everyone here that does have my number, will contact me to get visits, game tickets, or whatever I can do for them to assist in my next adventure. But I would not have been able to do this without the success that I had here. And yes, that's it. I just want to say thank you. Once again, I'm still here. Next couple of weeks, hopefully, my goal was to come at least the first day of school to assist. This is still my heart, you know. I was the longest active chief here for a statutory police department. When I first took over, it was no rulebook, that nobody passed me a book. Like, the things I've created here from our FTO program. When we first took over, Ms. Burke, remember, we took over and our SOPs was, I think, 32 pages. And now they're 90-something. But things I've implemented here, I know they'll still stick. And I'll always be a warrior. But hey, thank you again for your time.
Could this family, could this family come up? Please definitely come up, please.
Yep.
Thank you. I am going to miss you very much, very much.
Okay. Well, South Bend is getting a number-one draft choice. It's been a pleasure. Okay, next on our agenda is Brendan Edwards. Is he here? Uh huh, there he is. Looking pretty cool there. Looking pretty cool. He's our mayor's neighborhood advocate.
Good evening, everybody. So wrapping up the summertime, having a little bit of fun, no problem with that, right? So I actually got these from the Indiana Black Expo. You guys were out there, and I went by your table, and they had some shades. And I was like, "Oh, is that a W on the side there? Not bad." So I was like, and then they're like, "He should wear it at the board meeting." I was like, "They'll like that." So, you know. Wrapping up the summertime. So first off, I was going to mention that DPW, so Department of Public Works, we're in conversation about having some more specific updates for my area of service. So it would be Area 2 Far East Side. There are going to be a lot of those projects, larger projects, that you all already are familiar with somewhat. A specific focus on just Area 2 Far East Side that I have. And then showing each of the major transportation projects that you can find online. Go onto indy.gov, and you can be able to search major transportation projects. And you can see a map, you can see the projects that's happening through the entire city-county area. And then also, you can see how much they cost and what they're supposed to do. So it's very transparent. And on top of all of that, next year, there is going to be a lot more money put into roads and everything, of course. But on top of that, $5 million specifically dedicated to alleyways. So if you have any alleys in mind that you know that has been just completely torn up or anything like that, and you really want to get that into the Mayor's Action Center, you want to put that into the request, Indy, please make sure to do that, because there's specific money for that next year. So, report, report, report all of the alleyway issues that you might have. Okay. You might have already been seeing the Propel Indy meetings around. There's already one right now happening at Far East Side. There's two more coming up, though, so don't worry if you are missing out on this one. Because Thursday, there's going to be one between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. at Martin University, if you would like to be able to learn more and also give input on the I-70 construction, future construction. They said, "Over the next 20 years." So you can be able to give some input that really lasts a long time for them to consider. And then on top of that, they're also going to be at the NDOT Traffic Center. And that's going to be on Thursday, July 27th, and that's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. If you're still interested, there's one more opportunity for you to be involved in that conversation. So the Community Career and Resource Expo, that's going to be Thursday. That's going to be at the Morehead Community, sorry, sorry, not that one, sorry. The Resource Expo is going to be at CAFE between 4:30 and 6:30. And then you already know about the Morehead Community Resource Center. They're going to have their back-to-school event. I'll be there as well, come say hello. And I'll be there with even more flyers and things like that. I have some of these back here, if you would like to make sure to, you know, flag me down. Also, you have the East 38th Street Library. That is actually going to be a celebration of their 20th anniversary. And that's going to be on July 26th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I'm going to at least be stopping by there, if not, going to be there for a while. And, you know, that's a good time, if you haven't been there in a while. Indiana Solar 101, I've shared this flyer out a little bit, but they have both in-person and they have Zoom webinars. If you want to learn more about solar energy opportunities here, there's a co-op program. So go ahead and write down these two dates, Wednesday, July 26th at 6:30. And then you have Thursday, August 17th, and that's also at 6:30. If you are interested in that, those are both virtual. Visit solarunitedneighbors.org if you want to know more information about that. Everybody should know about the Far East Side Festival at this point in time, but not everybody may know about the time. So that's going to be on July 29th, between 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. I'll also be there as well, get there early. I've talked about the Cumberland event before, Blues Beer and Barbecue. And then you have the 29th as well, in the PM, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's a ladies' night, so go ahead and participate in that if you want to. 11623 East Washington Street, if you are interested in that. National Night Out, it's an opportunity to get a little bit more involved with knowing how to communicate with IMPD and, you know, have a pretty informative time there on August 1st. Check on social media, they already have posted some things. And then if anybody else is hosting an event for that day, that's, definitely look into that. Search "National Night Out" and you can be able to find that. And then if you want to contact IMPD, of course, they can give you information too. So the Forest Manor Eskenazi Health Fair, that's going to be a good event. I'll also be there. And you can be able to learn more about all the health care and also, you know, health concerns. You can learn more about that. August 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So that's another opportunity for you to get out there. And then you have the Far East Side Peace Walk, which is annual, of course, but that's going to be on August 12th, between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. August 9th is going to be the IMPD Task Force Meeting. They didn't have one this month because of their East District Community Day. Hopefully, you got out there, it was a really nice time. Thank goodness for that big tree that was out there, because it was a scorcher that day. 201 North Salem, if you don't know the address, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., interested in that. I will go to the flyers that I have here, because some of them are pretty new. I don't have them written down quite yet. We have the Pack the Bus, I did share this one on social media. So Pack the Bus is a school supply and children's clothing drive. And that's going to be, that's sponsored by Cherishing Families Shared Housing. And that's going to be Saturday, July 29th, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's going to be 222, sorry, 2229 Sheldon Street. So if you're interested in having a little bit more opportunities to get kids their school supplies and clothes, that's a great one. Check on indyfoodpolicy.org to know more about the food distribution they're doing in the side of town. They've been coming here a lot more often. So Laundrie &amp; Mores, their main place that they go to. However, there's a few others as well. So, for instance, Capital City Church, that's going to be Thursday at 4:00 p.m. If you are interested in getting some more fresh food, especially if it's local food as well. They have a lot of local grocers and growers. You have the Laundrie &amp; Mores again on Tuesday, the 25th of July. So, again, look this kind of thing up on their social media and on their website, indyfoodpolicy.org. Or you can email ophsfood@indy.gov, they got a new email. So, check that out. I also have shared this Office of Public Health and Safety contact sheet. One of the new additions to the Office of Public Health and Safety is behavioral health. This is mental health and substance use treatment. If you are interested in that, you can always email OPHS, but they have ophs@indy.gov, but they have a phone number as well, 317-327-4291. So be able to ask for behavioral health, if you're interested in that. I also have some of these as well. Speaking for our library, Fiber Folk Tales Crafting Club. If you're interested in having an opportunity to get crafty, they got something for you. The fourth Monday of each month at 6:00 p.m. So that's a good opportunity for you, if you are just kind of on the fence about thinking about it. It's a great place for crocheting, knitting, sewing, everything. And then, lastly, well, actually, two more things. They have one-on-one tech time at Warren. That's going to be Wednesday, August 2nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And, you know, make sure to register by calling 317-275-4552. This is about teaching you how to use a device if you're not quite sure about it. Or if you know somebody who kind of wants a little bit more help, this is a great time to teach. Then we have the Fort Bend Branch Grand Opening. You've already been seeing or hearing about that a little bit over time. Saturday, August 19th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Interested in that, go ahead and attend that. 9330 East 52nd, sorry, East 56, sorry. Oh, and then the last, last thing is to just kind of put a word out there about the Chinese Festival. It's going to be September 9th, and that's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. At IEPUI Wood Plaza. So if you're interested in that, it's a free event, free parking, free admission. Like, check it out on their Facebook page, Indy Chinese Fest. And if you have any questions, go ahead and reach out. And that's pretty much all the main stuff, other than the stuff that I've already posted on Nextdoor and everything. Like CDL Training on August 2nd, I believe it was, and that's on CAFE's website. You know, things like that. So, any questions for now? Yeah. I did hear about some, like, conflict resolution-type stuff. So they actually do have a phone number now. I'm not sure if anybody has that phone number. But I definitely would suggest getting that as a part of what you have to reach out to somebody to mediate one of those issues in your neighborhood. I've talked about it before, but I don't think it was so clear as to who exactly to call. There was, there is, there is an email, that's clear. But I at least want to put that out there, because I did hear that, you know, mediation and de-escalation were some things that definitely came up earlier. So make sure that you write this down, if you're interested in that. I shared it a while ago, sorry. Okay, so 317-363-1699. That's the Indy Center for Conflict Resolution. I could have a lot more to say, but I kind of wanted things to keep going if they, you know, if you'll have it, so. Oh, Indy Center for Conflict Resolution, that is 317-363-1699. Their email is conflictresolution@indypsf.org. So, all right, that's the main stuff. If you had any other questions, go ahead and give me a call, give me an email. 317-833-4933. And then brendanedwards@indy.gov. Thank you very much.
Hey Brendan, thank you, we really appreciate that. You brought us a lot of information, we appreciate hearing it, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, do we have any board correspondence?
No, we do not.
Do we have any green cards?
Also, no, we do not.
Okay. Well, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, or approval of the consent agenda. It includes approval of minutes, finance report, payroll claims, finance report, claim register, and electronic payments, financial report, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resource report, a field trip report, permission to accept gifts and grants, about five change orders, use of school property, and a technical corrections for policies. Could I get someone to move to accept the consent agenda?
I wish Shana Tripleso moved that we accept the consent agenda.
Well, I tell you what, LaShana, you, can we use that as a second? Because Gloria Williams had removed the motion initially.
Absolutely. I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
We have to do it.
You gonna do that?
Yep.
Okay.
So Gloria? That's an aye. Howard?
Aye.
That's an aye. Julie? That's it? Yes? Kevin?
Aye.
That's an aye. LaShana?
Aye.
Thank you, LaShana. Terry?
Aye.
That's an aye. And I am also an aye. It passes unanimously.
Good, thank you very much. Next is Ryan Russell. He's going to introduce the new administrator.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and those that are here. This time, it's my great pleasure to welcome back and welcome home our newest administrator here in Warren Township. At this time, I would like for Octavia Stovall to come join me up at the podium. I don't know if Octavia remembers this or not, and I was trying to think about what year it was. I'm guessing it was 2017. I visited her in her classroom, and she was then a teacher at Raymond Park. And I think I asked her what she wanted to be when she grew up. She, we certainly had recognized her passion, her energy, and her leadership as a teacher. And I think she told me she wanted to be a superintendent at that time, believe it or not. And I said, "Well, she has a vision, she knows what she wants." And she started gaining many opportunities in Warren. She was an eighth-grade language arts teacher here. Before that, I know she taught high schoolers or freshmen English in another district. She went on after that meeting with myself. She became a student success coach, and she also was an instructional coach at Stony Brook for a little bit of time. She went away and gathered some great administrative experience in another district. And I am honored to have her come back. And she will now be our newest assistant principal at Sunny Heights Elementary.
Thank you. President Dorsey and Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I am super excited to be back here in Warren Township. During my interview process, I talked about just being a Warren parent. I am a citizen in Warren, and so I've always been supportive of the district. It's just very exciting to be back in elementary, so I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. My former principal said to me, he said, "Octavia, you're going to be great. You are one of those high-five, hugging people anyway, so you're just going to rock out." And so I'm like, I'm pretty sure there's more to it than that, but I'm definitely looking forward to that. And so just meeting with the assistant principals today and just kind of running into people that I've seen throughout the district with my experience here, as well as just being a part of the community, really just makes me feel at home. And so I know that I made the right decision to come back, and I'm just excited to get to work. So I definitely appreciate this opportunity and look forward to serving our families here in Warren. to serving our families here in Warren.
Okay. So engrossed. Really glad to see her here. Next on the agenda is our reports. We'll start with Brittany Silkwerth. She's going to speak on the Warren Arts and Education Foundation Report.
Good evening, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, board members and community. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm excited to share the impact that we made last year and then share the vision and some new ideas for this year for the foundation. So last year, with leadership from LaShawna as our board president, and she'll continue into next year, we were able to make a $700,000 impact through sponsorships, donations, and in-kind gifts as well. Of that, we gave $54,000 in classroom grants to schools, seven scholarships to high school seniors, and we also had two successful fundraising events to help with that. Some just projects and highlights that I want to make from the last year is we placed two additional book vending machines that have seen success, and I think every school has now requested one. So hoping to make that happen. We put one in at Sunny Heights Early Childhood, and we have a donor that is putting one in at Morehead. Working closely with Walker Career Center on numerous different things, but one big project was student transportation. So with serving students and working closely with them, we found that a barrier for students was transportation. They were not able to get to work-based learning sites. So we were able to help fund that, and we'll continue to do that into this year and then hopefully for a long time. We are going to be helping Hawthorne with a media room, and I've worked closely to just get some of those things bought. We distributed $10,000 worth of brand-new books at different literacy events and continue to make literacy a focus going into this year as well. We had a Partners in Education Breakfast and saw great success through that event. We've engaged new partners as well as just grown some relationship to make them even stronger. We have a great relationship with MCRC, so the foundation has worked very closely with James on numerous large grants, continues to do so, and just work closely with their staff. And then we continue to do our Fine Arts Awards where we recognize students K through 12 at the end of last school year. So those are just some of the bigger projects. Many of you were at our gala. It was our second Black Gold Gala, kind of taking it off of True Fest. And so we were able to raise $130,000 at that event and had over 400 attendees. Just a couple weeks ago, we had our golf outing. I think the weather was the best that we've ever had, which was great. We raised over $27,000 and had 26 teams attend that Kind of going into the school year, starting next week, kind of the vision that WAVE has. We'll continue to do projects that we've been doing, but looking to make this, you know, the biggest year yet, the biggest impact that we've made. So we've seen a lot of success in our Donors Choose Grants for teachers. I would encourage you, if you haven't gone on Donors Choose to do so, you can search Warren Indianapolis. Right now, I looked today, there was 35 different projects from teachers, ranging from elementary to high school, which is great to see because we hadn't been getting high school grants. But teachers go on there, they write a little story of what their project would help fund, how many kids it will serve. And then after we fund the projects, they send pictures and stories, just kind of recapping that. So it's great to be able to see. We go in and surprise classrooms with the grant. So we'll start to do this over the next couple of weeks. Typically, we go on when there's a matching gift opportunity so that we can double the impact, fund all of the grants. So last year, we were able to fund every Donors Choose project that was submitted on that platform. So looking forward to doing that again. Our staff, as you know, are doing amazing things in Warren, and we want to continue to celebrate them. So working closely, you know, with some schools and principals, but how do we have staff-specific events? Is it a trivia night? What does that look like? So we will continue to do more of those things. Alumni engagement is a huge focus for us, continuing into this year. We are going to be doing monthly newsletters, features of alumni, building a new alumni committee. So in the next week, we're going to be pushing that out. Anyone that's interested in being on that will have subcommittees with events. And then just working on some large grant projects. So I've had, you know, meetings with different school staff, looking at what are those larger opportunities that we can do to help remove barriers to learning in Warren Township for all of our students that would not, projects that would not fall under the regular school budget. So thinking more of that was 10,000-plus projects, focusing, you know, literacy, mental health, just really just meeting the needs of all of our students. So excited to have someone helping with grants to help make some of those projects happen. And again, hoping to make this year the best year yet. So want to thank everyone in the support of Warren Township too, because we could not do what we do without you guys.
Anybody got any questions? Okay. Thank you, Brittany. Appreciate that.
Thank you for all your hard work.
The next item on the agenda is School Progress Report Overview by Ryan Russell.
All right, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight, I share with you an update of our school progress reports where we are as of July 19th, 2023. So you should have a handout. It's really a one-page handout for each individual school that has a progress report. All the data that you see in tonight's presentation is reflected by school in the one-page overview for each school. I won't be referencing that as much during this actual presentation. I'm giving you an accumulation of all of that kind of as a district overview for our progress report, but that has a preliminary data for some of the key indicators that we assess. The other thing that I would want to note on that, the original progress reports, as you know, as they were developed, there's over 150 indicators that are on those progress reports. The one-page overview has anywhere between 18 and 20 on them now. It doesn't have disaggregated information on it yet. We still have some data, we're still waiting on some data. Data is embargoed by the state, not necessarily ready or available for release. So we'll have an upcoming work session, most likely late fall, early winter. Like we did last year, we had a work session to go over some of the progress report initial data, when all that data is available. Tonight, what I share with you, or what I believe are the key indicators on that progress report, they're the key indicators that all of our schools use for their school improvement plans. Some of them verbatim out of the indicators that are on there. So happy to talk about that as we get into this a little bit more, but just know there is more, but there's some key stuff in this as well. Certainly want to talk, the progress reports were designed specifically around the strategic plan and the board goals. There is indicator data for each of the five strategic plan areas that certainly associate are associated with the board goals as well. So you'll see one for each one of these areas as they were designed in our initial creation of those when we started this a year ago. Here are the areas that I will highlight tonight, just to give you a broad overview before we dive into a lot of numbers and tables. This year, our Invest in Meeting the Needs of the Whole Child, one of our key indicators for data that we looked at was student attendance. You know the focus and the dedication all of our schools, all of our staff provided on student attendance, and that'll be reflected through that. Invest in the Future of Our Graduate. On the K4 report card level or progress report level, we looked at iRead achievement, which I had the opportunity to talk to you guys last month about, which I'll bring up again tonight. K4 and K8, we looked at both iLearn achievement and NWA growth, which I'll report on tonight. At the high school level, we look at SAT, really the College Board suite of assessments. That's SAT for 11th graders, that's PSAT, NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test is what that stands for, and then PSAT achievement as well. Invest in efficiencies and environment. We really look at climate and culture data around the MTSS student supports. It might be easier referred to as discipline data, student referrals, student suspensions, such like that. We rely a lot on panorama data for Invest in People and Invest in Relationships with Families and the Community. It's not the only thing we use for the progress reports, but it's a highlight of the data that we have available for us now. So Invest in People, we look at the perceptions of school leadership through the teacher and staff survey, and Invest in Relationships with Families in the Community. We're really relying on our families and our community via that panorama survey that talk to us about school fit and school culture as well. So that's a lot. And if you allow me the opportunity to go through these, I certainly will give you time to look through the tables as we go through, but probably not as much time as you ultimately will want, because there's a lot of information in here. And then, as you know, or as I hope you know, I'll be happy to answer questions either tonight after the presentation or anytime before our work session. So Investing in the Meeting the Needs of the Whole Child, again, all about attendance. This was one area where every school improved. Every, some by more than others, but every single school improved. You see the pre-K4 percentages, and again, progress report, most of tonight, what I'm reporting on is the progress between the 21-22 and the 22-23 school year. And then as I go to the next slide, the attendance, which I'm not going to talk a lot about attendance, because I believe I have a colleague who's going to give a report on attendance right after me. But certainly just shows the significant improvement that we had. Just some fun, did you know, if you, there are 2,052,000 possible days of school for Warren Township students in a school year. That's based off around 11,400 students, I believe. So I know I was talking to Ms. Taylor the other day, and she goes, you know, we only improved by 3.2%. She was hoping she would be a little bit higher. Well, we all want it to be higher, right? But at the same time, but did you know that 3.2% increase means 19,844 more days of school that students attended last year? So when we say attendance counts, obviously, we know attendance counts, but what is a 3% increase at Warren Central High School? It's almost 20,000 days of school that students were there this previous, or this past school year that they weren't the one before. So that's a remarkable accomplishment that we know comes with it, other gains as well. So a gain is a gain is a gain. Sometimes when you can't run, you walk, and sometimes when you can't walk, you crawl. But we don't diminish any of the gains that we see. So we talked a lot about attendance, and we'll talk more about it tonight. I read data that I had the opportunity to share with you last month as well. I can tell you on a very basic level that between my presentation with you last month and even now, there were three more students who passed the iRead test, which inched it back up even more. Again, this is about individual school progress when we look at the progress reports. And you can certainly see what that represents in terms of both significant gains on some parts and areas for improvement in others. One of the most exciting things that I'm excited to highlight to you tonight is our NWA growth. NWA measures growth, and it also measures achievement. We've used it as a primary measure of growth as we start to look at it from an achievement perspective when we look at it and compared to iLearn. The target in an NWA growth score is 50, which basically means students are progressing as we would hope that they would progress if there's a median unconditional growth score of 50. In previous years, ever since COVID, we've really struggled to get at that standard of 50. We really set it out to be a focus for all schools, but, well, for all schools that are tested, but a focus for all areas as well. This is our NWA MAP growth data for our K4 schools and math. You can see that absolutely outstanding improvements that our schools accomplished this year. When you look at the changes, everyone positive, in some cases, positive by over 40 points. It's just an indication of the improvements that schools made on a growth perspective. And I'll talk more about how that equates to achievement as well. The next slide of that is reading. As you know, we had a very intense K2 focus on reading this past year. I think our results demonstrate that focus when we look at the significant improvements that every elementary school made in K2 reading. And obviously, an indication of additional improvements that we certainly want to see in the future. But I am just elated about what that looks like, especially at the K2 level. Our intermediate middle schools take NWA in grades five through seven, similar to that approach in terms of what gross look or growth looked like in grades five, seven math by school. We certainly saw a substantial impact in the amount of growth that students were receiving or earned. And then we saw some modest gains in reading as well. The other thing that I would add is, in a year, some of you may have seen, I think it was shared with you guys on some capacity, but this is the first year, NWA is a nationwide test with over a million students taking that test every year. This is the first year as a nation, we didn't meet growth goals as a United States. I find that, I find our results even more remarkable, the fact that not only did we meet ours, we exceeded ours by so much when comparatively, you know, as a nation, that our students were struggling so much with that. So I think that's a really good sign that it's a leading indicator of some things that we build upon in the future years. I'm going to transition on to another test. Are there any questions about NWA before I move forward?
Yes, I just wanted to say that Stony Brook and Creston seem to be struggling in the reading area. Is there any thing put in place to try to help them this coming up school year to try to increase in that area?
Yes, I would say there are two things I would respond to that, Ms. Williams. 50% is the mark, and Stony Brook exceeded that mark in terms of the progress report goal that was set forth, although they scored 53% the year before, and 53% this year. To me, that doesn't indicate a major flaw in terms of that. 36 to 38, anything in the 30s is concerning, so that for sure, that one with Creston as well. Our focus in reading has turned from a really a K2 focus to a K12 focus in reading in terms of what that support looks like. We can talk more specifically about the individual schools and what support plans are in place with them. But there's certainly a specific response to anything in here that certainly would show an area of need.
Yeah, my concern, I just want to make sure that we continue to move forward each year. And even though that's 53-53, that means that was no improvement in that area. And then when, going back to iRead, Stony Brook and Creston was in the negative.
There's no iRead for Stony Brook? Hawthorne and Lakeside?
It was... I sure wish I had talked. Okay, yeah, there's the negatives right there. Negative 3%, negative 5%. Hawthorne and Lakeside. So when we talk about iRead, we want to try to see what do you have in place that, since we know that those two schools are struggling, are we going to give them additional resources or support in order to try to help that number improve?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the other thing that, again, I would say it's similar to the Stony Brook-Creston conversation that was there. Each one of these stories, each one of these numbers tells a story. And part of it, depending on the chapters of that story that you read, depend on the move that you would make for support. Some cases, it's additional resources. In other cases, there's a very unique story to maybe why something's there the way it is and how it combines to others. to maybe why something's there the way it is and how it combines to others. So yes, the purpose of the progress report is to see what's going well and what's not going well. School leaders already, each one of these building leaders for all these schools that are represented in our district have this data already. It's been a part of, actually, it's part of their evaluation, building leaders' valuation for their, and it directly goes into a school improvement plan. So they make specific plans to address whatever areas where they're not making gains in that.
So we can expect to see a little progress on the next report?
We expect, we expect progress on every area, absolutely. Going, transitioning into I learn for that. So I learn is given in grades three through eighth. This is math to start off with. I learn is a test that measures proficiency on grade level standards. I learn measures achievement, it doesn't measure growth, and these are achievement scores for that. You can look here at grades three through eight, where we fell in twenty-twenty-one and where we fell in twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three for that. There's some numbers that say plus, and there's also some numbers that obviously have showed a dip, and that's clear indications for what those goals and improvement plans will look like, specifically from each building. These are the language arts in comparison to the math that I showed. Again, there's a lot of numbers on these tables that we're sharing in terms of what indication of growth or what indication of non-growth look like for that. This is where I learn stops, so happy to answer any questions about I learn.
What is the school at the bottom?
School at the bottom is Stony Brook.
We have a lot in this I learn that is in the negative. We have about five or six that are in the negative.
Yeah, I see one, two, three, four right here in the reading.
East Ridge, Liberty Park?
Yeah, you're.
Does it run Raymond Park?
Yeah, there's a math and there's a reading one as well for that, but yes, there are some for that.
The reason I'm emphasizing this is, you know, once we get the data and we recognize that they're, just like we did, goals for attendance, and you know what, we set those goals high, and then I know when she come with the attendance report, we're probably going to make some significant growth in attendance. As far as academic progress, maybe we need to start setting higher goals so that these numbers can increase, and then try to come up with, like the superintendent said, ten different ways, ten what?
Ten times.
Ten times, ten different ways. We need to, because as a district, we don't want our schools to be in the negative. We want to show that our students are learning, and there's no student left behind in any of our schools. So we need to come up with ten times ten different ways so that these negatives can turn into positives.
I don't disagree.
So hopefully, we can, you know, when you talk to the different schools, we can see that they made some high goals and some really targeted goals that they're going to use and start seeing the art of it. The next time we look at this report, we'll see a change in the negative.
Yeah, I'll add, at the end, there's some high-level, I would say, summer reflections that I think will probably be music to your ears specifically, because I think we're saying the same thing, Ms. Williams, in terms of that. I'll remind all of us, our goals for I learn are eighty percent. Our expectation is we score an eighty percent or gain from the previous school year as ways to meet the goal. We do need to increase our expectations for that. I would totally agree with that statement.
And the reason I'm just so hard on, and I'm going to say too much, because I believe that given, you know, like, what was that saying? Was if they don't learn the way we teach, then teach the way they learn. So we can reach every child. I have a one-year-old granddaughter at home, and, you know, if she can learn the reading, I mean, she knows at least thirty vocabulary words, all the letters of her alphabet, she can recognize them and the sounds, and give words to go with each one, and she's only one. So if a one-year-old can learn these things in just doing different things, ten different ways, ten different ways, times ten different ways, then I know that other children that are older can also do the same. So I think as a district, we just need to up our expectations, our goals, and then just have them to try to reach and attain those goals so that we can stand out as a district.
Absolutely. Transitioning on to the academic, invest in the future of our graduates as assessed by Warren Central High School. There's not an I learn for Warren Central in testing math and English. There is the P S A T nine and ten in the S A T. Here, what this number represents are students that are deemed college and career-ready by achieving a certain score aligned to the grade level to be basically deemed college career-ready by college board for that. So you can see for math, ninth graders, fifteen percent of the ninth grade cohort in the twenty-one, twenty-two achieved that level, and the twenty-two, twenty-three, there's twenty-one percent. I won't read them all to you. Yes, there's some areas for significant improvement here as well with that, and those are areas that we're focusing on as part of our goals.
So, sorry. My concern become, AS Fab is in essence going to be taken away as an option for achieving, for showing college and career readiness for the diploma. We've got students coming up, obviously, in pretty high numbers that don't have the other achievements. Are we?
We can still graduate students through box two through a pathway option. So this is an estimate. I would say only about thirty-five percent of our students check box two through a qualifying exam. A lot of people do it through a pathway-specific option, both, there's a multitude of those, but that is another way for them to do that. I personally am not a big fan of AS Fab given to everyone just as a token for graduation. Obviously, it's a military readiness exam. It's been overused by most schools in the state of Indiana. I know we have pulled back on that to only test students who are truly interested in a enlistment career because of the plethora of options that we give our students to be able to complete pathways. That is not typically the issue for students in graduation.
So for this year's graduation numbers, did we have box two be something that significantly impacted that?
No, I would say the most significant impact for us on graduation would be credit attainment. Specific core class credit.
Right, okay, that makes me feel better, thank you.
Moving on up to invest in efficiencies in the environment. We set a goal through an M T S S process, so multiple-tier systems of support. We know that through our P B I S systems and everything that as we work very, provide a lot of dedication and work to our students, our goal and our target is no more than twenty percent of students in any one school receive an office referral. That means that eighty percent of students are not receiving an office referral. And what that means, it's an indication that your tier-one structure is in place and doing well. This is obviously an area of need for us when you take a look at that, because there's a lot of schools that struggled in that area. And specifically, when you look at our I M S schools, there's a lot of areas for concern specifically with that as well. What this data is indicating is what percent of students who earned an office referral at each school in the previous school year? We did not collect this data in twenty-one, twenty-two. This was in that data not available category when we originally reported it. So this is baseline data for us. I can tell you some moves specifically we've already talked about at the three I M S schools with this. As we talked about the professional development pathways, focus on a climate and culture pathway, specifically when you're looking at the percentage of students in our fifth through eighth grade that are, for lack of a better word, earning a office visit.
Ryan, on that, do we have a breakdown of, because there's four grade levels in each of those I M S buildings? Was there an outlier in terms of a grade level that had more referrals than the other grade levels?
At I M S level, it was seventh grade, for whatever reason. We had three outlier grade levels in the district this year. Grade two out of all grades, grade seven and grade nine when it came to office visits for that. Second, seventh, and ninth.
So when you say outlier, the second grade is compared to the other elementary grades?
Correct.
Seventh is compared to the other middle school grades, and then ninth is compared to the other high school grades?
Yes, sir.
So it's not like second graders out-referral seniors?
They weren't that naughty, no, no.
And we know that this is tracked per student as opposed to number of referrals versus total number of students.
Yeah, so we uniquely look at per student, not per referral. We had some indications, and that's where I would say, thank you for bringing that up. Sometimes the data, we found this to be a more accurate representation of the status of tier-one or probably the climate and culture from a behavior perspective than just looking at total referrals, because sometimes one student can earn many referrals, which kind of skews this. The target, again, being twenty, and obviously, we had some schools in there, and obviously, it's easier for our K four schools to accomplish this for whatever reason, but this is really providing focus for us. This is where the progress report's a great tool for us. This immediately, when I look at the five areas of the strategic plan and your board goals, this immediately, this data point really flashes in my face for some specific intervention and needs, especially at the I M S level, but really in all areas for that. So what that lets us do, I think to your point, Ms. Williams, whether it's academics or other parts, it really lets us dedicate our resource, provide some focus around that, really take a look at what we need to do to operate that way, because we're far from that mark in this area. I'm going to move to the suspension part of that.
Ryan?
LaShawna has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see you. Hi, LaShawna.
Hey, Ryan, how are you?
Great.
I have a question. Have we been able to break down, and maybe I have a lag in my connection, like for the middle schools, the percentages are a lot higher. Do we know if those scholars had to escalate to tier three? Do you have a breakdown, like, if they were referred and got, received prevention services at the tier-one level? Did that prevent them from having to, you know, escalate to more services at a tier-three level?
Great question, I'm not prepared to talk about that tonight, but I can share with you some insights that we're looking at around that. I'm looking up at the screen like you're looking at me, but. So specifically, what this one slide shows me is really about tier-one needing some, needing some support for that. We're also looking at there, and as we break it down, is, okay, let's, let's look at Creston, because it's first on the list here in I M S. Forty-five percent of the student body received a referral, but out of that forty-five percent, how many only received one referral? Versus how many referred multiple ones for that? Not that everyone should get a referral, but there's a big difference between what that looks like from a tier-one and that. When I look at the next slide, which I'm going to go there as I start to answer your question in more detail, it also reflects, the next target is, in our M T S S system, we don't want any more than five percent of the student body to be suspended in any one school, because that shows us, there are some discipline events that take place where suspension may be a first approach, that's rare, even for, that's rare. However, I can't say it never happens. A suspension indication is showing repetitive referrals and probably escalated behavior in some regards. So we set that target at no more than five percent. So ninety-five percent of a student body in a school, the goal is for them not to receive an out-of-school suspension. So again, we're calling a suspension a tier-three response to what's going on. You can see some of the same concerns in the data there at the tier-three level, because you're seeing, all the I M Ss are remarkably similar in terms of that. Creston and Raymond Park and Stony Brook, well, twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-two percent respectively within those areas, showing that twenty-three, twenty-two to twenty-three percent of the student bodies receiving an out-of-school suspension. Again, indications that the repetitive things taking place, or repetitive events taking place. We need additional supports or a different way of looking at what that looks like from a tier-one, two, and three perspective as well. Does that help a little bit? There's far more data that I need to go into with that, but that's not in tonight's presentation.
Yes, Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it did help a little bit, I guess. My concern, and I know you're probably already working on this, but looking at it from a perspective of supporting the scholars, but also, how are we going to kind of support the staff, right? To be able to assess those situations a little differently where everything is not like warranted to a, you know, an automatic suspension. I think that's going to be important as well, to just make sure we are working with our admin and our teachers on how those referrals look. Because as you know, referrals start paper trails, and that's how we, you know, kind of get to the school-to-prison pipeline. And I appreciate our district looking at this from a standpoint to want to minimize that paper trail. As far as our scholars getting, you know, referrals, what other ways at tier-one can we work with our scholars besides giving them a, you know, an office referral?
Yeah, a lot of it, we're speaking the same language in terms of, a lot of it is about the support, student need to be successful, not how we respond after something bad happens. And the focus of what that means, not only to support the student, but what that means for what training and support our staff need to be able to both de-escalate, empathize, and those other things. Because of this data, really serves into a very specific professional development goal for those schools, which is something that, again, the progress report helps us, not because we like looking at data that doesn't meet the target, but it lets us know where to focus our energy and effort with our staff and with our goal-setting processes on it. So there will definitely be more on this, especially as we break down more, disaggregate this data more at our work session, for sure.
And to add to that, when we talk about little, I mean, younger students, I noticed that Brookview is the highest as far as suspension rate, and then Lakeside, and then Grassy Creek coming in. As you were talking about, you know, coming up with different strategies and different trainings and things on how you can work with the younger students to keep them from having a high suspension rate in elementary school, because that sends negative messages to them, you know, like she was saying about the pipeline to prison. You start off young, suspending them from school constantly, then that's going to give negative vibes to them, and that's going to carry on over into the middle school and into the high school. So starting at that elementary level, it should be definitely less suspensions there. And I applaud the schools that have low numbers. That means they have come up with ways and means of working with their students to keep from suspending them. Maybe some of the people from Brookview and Lakeside and Grassy Creek need to send someone over to try to find out what are they doing in order to keep their numbers low so that they can do the same, because it shouldn't be the case with young children getting suspended from school.
Yeah, I know we've had conversations about that in the past, especially as we've talked about some specific scenarios with that. Yeah, again, every data point tells a story. Every story has a lot of other factors into that. I think one of the reasons I gave you the one-page overview for each school is because when you look at this data topic by topic, it's really easy to point out a school. When you look at a school's whole body of work, I think what you'll see is there's some things that we can celebrate at each school, and there's some things that are in significant needs of improvement for each school. When I look at this, there's some specific areas of needs for improvement with some schools, but they had some, they had some other positive numbers in terms of there too. And again, it's a tool we use to be able to make sure that we're providing the right resource, giving the right, creating the right expectations, and doing the right things for our school as we do that, because you're absolutely right.
No, I just want to. No, I just want to say this last thing. When you said that some schools, you know, they do something good and something bad, it's just like a report card.
Absolutely.
If I'm taking classes, and I make As and Bs in some classes, and I make a D and an F in another, then that just tells me I need to study a little harder to try to bring my Ds and Fs up. It's not saying that I'm a bad student, it's because it reflects that I'm making As and Bs in some subjects, but it does say that I need to focus on those particular areas that I'm making a D and an F in, so that I can bring those grades up to par, you know? So that's all that I'm saying is, you know, not saying that they're not doing great things, but this is a report card, and those areas that are not so good, we need to focus on trying to bring them up to par.
Absolutely. One thing that we, one thing that we continue to say is that celebrating success and wanting to do better are not mutually exclusive, right? You can, you can certainly want to do both for that. So let me dive into this.
Mr. Russell, before you dive in, let me ask you this. Where are the Renaissance numbers for referrals and suspensions? Why are they not shown here?
Renaissance does not have a progress report specific to Renaissance, because all of its data is reflected at the individual schools that are sent to that. We can provide Renaissance-specific data for you, that's not a problem, but it's not a, you'll see that both Highlander Park, in terms of Warren Online Academy, Adult Education, Walker Career Center, Renaissance, and the Early Childhood Center are schools that currently don't have a progress report reflected as an individual place.
And why did you say you do that?
Right now, so technically, Renaissance is not a school, and data is not reported specific to Renaissance. Renaissance is a program. Students who attend Renaissance, their information, whether it be really referral, academic data or everything, is reported directly back to its home school. So that'd be Raymond Park, Stony Brook, Creston, or the high school. We can report data on Renaissance specifically, but because it's not, we just don't collect data in the same way to give to the DOE because of the reporting requirements.
Why don't you, oops, why don't you report them? I mean, I'm not saying rhetorically, I'm saying, I would like to see that information, because I would like to see how many, it gives me a full understanding. I know you send, the state wants to see these numbers you're showing here, but I'd be interested in knowing what the, what Renaissance.
Yeah, we can provide that. We just don't have a progress report specific for that.
And what that tells me is that the numbers for the middle school and the high school may go, go up or down. It'll go down, it will absolutely go down.
This is, it can. This is, this data is reflective of only incidences that took place at that school.
What, you send this data?
This data.
Well, then, where is the Renaissance data?
Yeah, because it doesn't have a progress report, it's not included in this. I'm happy to share that with you guys.
Yeah, we need to make that a task.
Sure.
Ryan, wouldn't some of the data that's on the schools pertaining to Renaissance, because they would have gotten an infraction at their home school before they were transferred to Renaissance?
Yeah, the way the, the way the data is filtered is school of incident, not necessarily school that the student is at. So the other way that plays outside of Renaissance is, if I'm at Brookview for half the semester, and Brookview for the next, or for the second semester, all of my data, if, as a student, if I go to another school, all of my behavioral data doesn't go with me attached to school. So whatever I did at Brookview is at Brookview, whatever I did at, let's just say Hawthorne is at Hawthorne. So when we filtered out these numbers, it's unique students at this, at that particular school.
I think it might be beneficial to, as a full scope, is, like, out of those schools, what referrals actually resulted in that scholar's placement change into the Renaissance program? That would be some good data to know as well, out of this.
And we collect that as well through their, their referral process to Renaissance, that data is collected by Dr. Radford as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm saying, like, for the reporting purposes, I think that would be good, because you've given us some great information, but even showing that transition, okay, like, from Creston, we had, I'm behind what you all are on. So when you have the slide up about the suspensions, how many of those referrals resulted in that scholar actually been placed into the Renaissance program?
Okay.
I think that would be some good information as well.
Got it.
Hey, I've got one more thing to throw out there, and that is, I don't see anything, I don't see any expulsions on here. There has got to be a number of expulsions. I'd be interested in knowing what that is, as it relates to these middle schools, the high school, and also Renaissance.
Yeah, we, again, we can provide that expulsion data, it's just not part of the school progress report that, as we have it currently.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Don't we have a program, what is that program called, to keep them from?
ESP.
And expelled, you know, but they have to go through that program. What is it called?
ESP.
ESP.
Yes, okay. And how many students have gone through that program? How many students were helped through that program? And how many of our students that are put up for exposure that go through that program? That would be great to have that information.
Yep. That's, again, that's all data we certainly can get. And look, we're not, there's 200 indicators on the progress report, and I knew that, I'm sharing 18 of those with you tonight. There's no way in a presentation we can go through 200 indicators in 30 minutes, an hour, or whatever it is. Anything that requested in terms of data pieces for that, we're happy to provide. Just know that we're just pulling out specific parts of that progress report tonight. These are ones specifically, schools go and goal-set and dive their deeper, they run in deeper into those datas to pull those numbers, but in terms of ESP, expulsions, Renaissance data, or anything like that, we can, we can get that to you quickly.
If, if that's something you don't send to the state, what I'd like to see you do is, I'd like to see some of that data, but it can be as a, you know, an addendum, not an addendum, it could be additionally added to the, to the reports we get here. So, so, you know, you could have the details on the bottom, I don't, I'm not saying 200 or so, you can figure out the smaller number, but 18, I need more than 18.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's why we're doing a work session with all of those indicators together for that. Not all the data is available at this point for that, and then, these are the key, again, these are the key ones, schools are setting their goals for the 22, or 23, I guess it's 23, 24 already, 23, 24 school year for that, so.
And Ryan, I can say President Dartsey and Ms. Coria, that with, from the ESP program, there is data collected on who comes in the program, who recidivized, if they have, after they're gone back to their school, if they re-offended or had another offense or expulsion. So all of that data is available, and then, we, Ryan has access to that, to kind of put it in a chart, if that's what you all want to see, including who has graduated from that ESP program that was on the waiver.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all, that's all valuable stuff. I mean, I'm interested in knowing where we are, because those, that kind of data is data where you prevent, prevent, where you provide or create programs for, you know? And, you know, we've got a number of programs, of course, in the, in the district, but I mean, we, I think that kind of data, when, 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 is used to promote, like I say, create programs, and I think creating programs is what we do. I mean, you know, when we see there's a deficiency, or we see there's a problem, we put our heads together and we come up with a program, you know, if we got the funding, you know, that's another thing. So I'm just saying, we don't want to leave out anything that we, that we possibly could find some value in.
And we have around 15 prevention providers who come to ESP twice a month when it's held, to be able to provide the services, which is not a cost to the families. So it's a great partnership and collaboration, because you're pulling outside agencies that are able to provide services within the scope of the pending expulsion, but then, after that scholar goes back, they're in a program that will last beyond that, and they can still stay connected. So I think that's important, to know that there are a group of prevention providers that specialize in working with getting those youth transitioned back in the school from a community level, collectively with the school. Mr. Taylor's team coming together at that table, it's also Marion County DCS, our Warren Police Officers are there, and the Prosecutor Officer's there, so it's a collective program to help keep our scholars, you know, out of the judicial system, and possibly out of, you know, the DCS system by providing those services, which gives Warren, our district, a bonus, because we have something special in place to help our scholars to keep them from, you know, being expelled, when they come to ESP versus going to an expulsion hearing.
I, I know that Mr. Taylor shared some data on our expulsion rate at the Indianapolis Expo education event. I don't want to misquote him, because I don't remember if the number he gave was for the high school or for the district overall, but I know it was very low, for actually expelled versus the number of expulsion hearings that were held because of the ESP program.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, I think you're going to go over all of the stuff we're kind of getting off the topic on at a special work session, which is going to dive deeper into what he's telling us now, but this is really just based on the progress reports for each school, the...
Yeah, I mean, what I'm trying to do tonight is turn a two-day work session into a 30-minute presentation, which is somewhat impossible. There are some of the things that are data needs that are encompassed in the progress report, there's some that are not. We can, we could spend a whole work session on ESP if we wanted to, in terms of talking about the intricacies of that, and we do have that data for that, so.
Ryan, I don't mean to interrupt, but this is what our schools form their school goals off of, correct?
Correct.
So, just like there's 20 indicators, or 200 indicators, they pick 20 as their school goal and their focus, and that's what you're reviewing with us over all of that data today.
You'll see on our school improvement plans, there's about six schools that schools have for that, they're required to pick it from these indicators for that, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ryan. You gave us a, it's a lot of data, and I think what you have given is great, and taking the time to even put that in a graph, so we can do some comparisons. So I think the presentation is great, and I think it would be more beneficial, which you cannot do at a board meeting, is even for some of the board members who are interested in this, to, you know, go to those sessions, so, you know, they can have a better and clearer understanding of this, and how it's all sinking together to help pull down those expulsions, even though the suspensions didn't meet the mark, but the expulsions were lower. So thank you.
All right, are we ready for Invest in People? Okay, thank you. Invest in People, and I, comes from the Panorama Survey that we give twice a year for that. There are multiple elements of the Panorama Survey. One of the things that building leaders' goals set for their, for their specific schools and their leadership, is the school leadership component of the Panorama Survey. They continually try to increase that, or basically continue to get, show improvements in those areas. I know you're going to ask, so I'm going to tell you, some says, well, what does that consist of? So in the Panorama Survey, under school leadership, for the teachers and staff, it asks questions like, how clearly do your school leaders identify goals? How positive is the influence of school leaders on the quality of your teaching? How effectively do school leaders communicate? How knowledgeable are your school leaders about what's going on in classrooms? How responsive are your school leaders to feedback? How effective are school leaders at developing rules for students? When school makes important decisions, how much input do teachers have? So all of these. We've been given the Panorama Survey since 2020, and this has given us a good idea to see, really through the last three years, when we ask similar questions twice a year through that time, you really get a gauge of what's going on from a teacher perspective in the building. Panorama provides a high threshold for it to consider, these are what I would call favorability ratings. Panorama's at a scale of 5, you have to be rated a 4 or a 5 for it to be counted a positive. If you get a rating of 3, it considers it a negative for that, which is just a context for that. I'll point out a few things, we, I'm going to point out the positive ones, obviously. But we had a change in leadership at Creston last year. At the end of the 21, 22 school year, we had a very low 11% rating in terms of how school leadership was supporting the staff there. Through this year, after a new principal, new support in place, utilizing this, we saw a 56% increase for that, right? That's great, and seeing that. These results wax and wane over time, so we, the standard we set on them is we want 80% of people to give favorability ratings. Does that happen? Very few places for that, but you can see the changes that go with that. Dare I ask for questions on this one?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, yeah. What's waxing, waning?
Up and down, up and down. It's Mr. Miyagi karate kid terminology, so. Wax on, wax on.
You got to be attentive.
Yeah, I got it. All right, last category, but two different pieces. Same thing, panorama on this, but this is from our family and caregiver feedback. Now, we need increased participation in our panorama data from our families and community. We try to put it on, we really try to get it out there for people to report. We would love to have more engagement when it comes to the Panorama Survey, and we're going to work on that. First one that we're looking at in terms of this is school fit. What questions are asked as a part of school fit? How much of a sense of belonging does your child feel at school? How well do you feel your child's school is preparing him or her for their next academic year? How well do the activities offered at your child's school match their interest? At your school, how well does the overall approach to discipline work? How comfortable is your child asking for help? Given your child's cultural background, how good of a fit is his or her school? And do, how well do the teaching styles of your child's teachers match your child's learning style? So again, really looking at what this looks like year after year for that, to see increases, or what that looks like from time to time, depending on what that feedback looks like, is an indication of that. Last, but certainly not least, is school climate. We look at this from, school climate's the one consistent rating piece that we get from students, staff, and community. Looking at the community for this one, again, the questions that are being asked, what extent do you think your child enjoys going to school? How motivating are classroom lessons? How fair or unfair is the system of evaluating children? How much does the schools value a diversity of the children's backgrounds? How well do administrators at your child's school create a school environment that helps children learn? And overall, how much respect do you think that children at your school have for the staff? Again, these indications show us where we're trending in positive, or in some cases, not so positive directions, to help us goal-set about different things that we can do for the parents in the community.
Curious, I'm assuming, and you may have said this, and I just didn't hear it, but I'm assuming this is in a survey that you send it to the parents' homes?
Yeah, this is a panorama survey that we give both in the fall and the spring.
Okay, and how do they, and maybe I should know this, but how, how well is the feedback? I mean, I say feedback, I mean, the number that returned back. You send out 50, do you get 50 back, or do you get like, maybe 35? Are they participating?
One of the things that is on the piece of paper, when you look in terms of that, you'll see each school's in Strategy 5A1 in that indicator, you'll see if they're increasing or decreasing the amount of parents. It's listed as a percentage. Right now, for example, out of all the families at Warren Central, we got about 300 results in the parent and family... we got about 300 results in the parent and family survey in the fall, and that's up significantly. You know, we would love to have 3,000 for that. So some of our elementary schools got as few as 30, 30 pieces of feedback from families in the community for that. That's why I say we need to increase it. And sometimes it's hard to derive a lot if you have a low turnout, but we do utilize it as a place to goal set. Let me give you my summary, and I'm going to do this.
Oh, you mean we're almost done? Oh, no.
Indicators 42 through 74 will be next month. This is kind of the way I look at it, as we're talking about, each school has a different flavor, but in my role, working with, are really 17 building leaders, invest in the meetings and the needs of the whole child. We, we observe progress, indicates our current plan to improve student attendance is effective. We're, we're going to keep on doing that because it's showing positive results. Invest in the future of our graduates, IRE3 achievement. We saw progress this year as a district in IRE3 achievement. We saw progress and we, we scrapped and clawed for every bit of that, and we're going to, what we did obviously had a positive impact, and we're going to keep on doing that because that achievement growth is effective. NWA growth, this is the one area that I think we made absolutely exceptional progress in all areas in both reading and math. K8, ILEARN proficiency, which is achievement. We saw modest gains as a district. As some of you pointed out, some dips in some areas, some gains in another. Overall, as a district, we saw modest gains. We need to establish a greater emphasis on proficiency with grade-level skills along with growth. Ms. Williams, this is what I was saying in terms of my summary. Growth is great, we want to show growth. We have to increase that proficiency and achievement conversation and set the bar higher, and that's what we're going to do with our goals this year in order to, you're, you're singing my, singing my song when, when you say that. SAT and PSAT at the high school level is really comparable to 3-8 achievement with ILEARN. There's a significant need to focus on achievement of grade-level skills and not just talk about growth, and that, that's going to go through goal setting for that. Environments and efficiencies in environment. It varies by schools, but all schools review from the reestablished tier-one support systems. I called it out here in writing, intermediate middle, middle school data shows a great, greatest need for review of tier-one supports with, with the data that's there. School leadership, progress varies by school. When we look at those opportunities, there's two things that has basically been part of goals and will be part of goals as we go in this year. Increased teacher feedback systems. One of those questions that is asked of teachers in that survey is how much opportunity do I have to give feedback about important decisions in the school? We want to increase that to give teachers a higher level voice to impact that. The review of MTSS student supports, one of the highest things there is, teachers want to feel supported with student discipline. In the review and establishment of those systems, that continued work certainly supports that. Invest in relationships with families and community. There's a lot of feedback about parents and caregivers seeing the support that we do with academics and the whole child as effective. The school climate feedback from parents certainly suggests they desire more academic information directly about their students for that. That, that's a five-cent tour, and I don't know how long I've been up here, but in a long presentation, and there's a lot more, I understand that. I've noted the data requests made for not only future sessions, but some of that I can give, turn around pretty quick just so you guys can see it. Before I ask for any final questions, I am happy to look at any school's individual piece or this overall to dive deeper in with you. Just reach out, and if you want to have some more time before a formal session or anything, really the talk, even if it's the, just diving the Renaissance numbers together, Mr. Dorsey, or whatever like that, happy to do so. Not excluding anything on here other than just trying to be cognizant of the time that it takes to get all this on here. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Let, let me just say, you, you, you weathered the storm well. Yeah, it was good, 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 good presentation, and, and I will, I will.
Yeah, please do.
Get back to you before, before, we start earlier than most schools, but before the school I work at, I'm going to try to get with you.
Yeah, please do, let's do that.
Okay.
I want to say thank you so much for your hard work in providing this progress report. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I'm here to talk about an attendance overview from this past school year and a look ahead as to what we're doing this upcoming school year. Our attendance work aligns with your board goal for both invest in the future of our graduates and invest in meeting the needs of the whole child, as well as our strategic plan focus areas, future of our graduates, whole child, and invest in people. Our attendance data, so looking at last year with our attendance rate at 85.11%, we are headed in the right direction and proud of just over a 5% growth this school year with 90.65%. And looking at attendance across lots of different breakdowns and subgroups, compared to the 21-22 school year, we had increased attendance at every single grade level in every ethnicity category. Looking at students with disabilities, looking at our multilingual learners, students that receive free and reduced lunch, which I know that everybody gets free lunch here, but that meets those qualifications, and then our students who have been suspended. So in all categories, we saw an increase of attendance from last year as opposed to this year. One thing I wanted to highlight was that we provided over 41,000 interventions related to attendance this past school year. So that is phone calls, that's meetings with families, that is letters, attendance contracts, tier-three referrals. Really, the schools worked really hard at talking about attendance and responding to attendance and supporting students with attendance. And really, that 41,000 does not encompass all the work that was done with those additional conversations and communications that went out with them from buildings. So I know Mr. Russell previewed this before, so this is the same data he just shared, but I like the green column to show that we had an increase at all of our buildings with attendance. This is our pre-K4 data, and I mean, again, we're celebrating this. We have some schools that had greater growth than others. I'm going to talk a little bit about why we saw some of that at some buildings and some lessons that we learned on the success of some of the schools who had a greater increase. We had even bigger increase at the 5-12 level. So all of our intermediate middle schools, Warren Online Academy Renaissance, Warren Central, all had a great increase, really most over 3%. And I wanted to highlight that this includes students who have attended at any point during the school year. So if a student was just here for a few months or was here for the whole entire year, we're looking at a total number of student attendance. So if you look at kind of what our denominator is, it's larger because it includes all students that were here for any portion of the year. So our focus on attendance last year, what did we do? We had a district attendance plan that included, which, hold on, I'm going to pull my notes out here so I can remember. That included a lot of intentional things that we asked our buildings to do and communication. And we have a plan again this year that's updated from our one last year that for right now, our schools have a lot of things that they're doing before school even starts. So identifying students who missed 36 days or more last school year, contacting those families, letting them know when the first day of school is, what were the barriers to why they didn't attend last year, notifying parents of different ways that they can report absence of the importance of attendance, really being proactive to try to get ahead of it because attendance is not just about letters and letting people know when they didn't come. It's about how are we supporting to get kids to school and on the front end encouraging and building those relationships. We really tried to shift the focus to barriers. What is it, why is it that a student isn't coming to school? Is it that they have some mental health needs and maybe have some school avoidance issues, or they need some additional support with getting to school with transportation-related needs? You know, we have families that had different barriers with, you know, travel or parent jobs where we had students that were having to support other siblings or go with parents to events. And so really looking at kids individually, trying to find out why it was that they weren't coming to school and what we could do to help mitigate that and support. I talked a little bit about the proactive measures, really identifying those tier-three students before the school year even starts and putting in place measures to support with hopefully building success. So we've identified them, sending letters, calling and communicating with them. They're also, start out the year in an attendance with an attendance mentor, somebody who's checking in with them regularly, noticing when they're not there, encouraging them to come. They start in check-in, check-out, which is our MTSS tier-two intervention. I'm really trying to be intentional with building relationships, getting kids right off on the right foot. We had different attendance mentoring groups, 5-12, so all of our intermediate middle and the high school had different mentoring groups for students who were struggling with attendance to help build relationships. You know, again, that positive connection of why you want to come to school, why it's important, was something that we saw success with this past year, and we look forward to this year again. Incentive, incentives and acknowledgements, which I have a slide on this in a little bit I'm going to talk about. Increased awareness. We talked about attendance all year, and every single newsletter there was attendance data. You saw the sign here on the left, the attendance matters, was in all of our front offices, just bringing attention not only to the attendance rate, but when you pick your child up early or you bring them in late, they're missing instruction. And getting people in the mindset of it's important to come to school. If you have a doctor's appointment at 8:00 a.m. and it's done at 9:30, there's a whole rest of the school day your child can come to and learn. I mean, we've had this conversation in my house. My daughter had an orthodontist appointment, she was done at 2:00. My husband said, just bring her home. I said, no, she still has classes, we need to bring her back to school. Yes, does the, does my daughter want to go home and stay at home? Yes, but every single minute counts when they are, when we're trying to meet those achievement goals that Mr. Russell was talking about, they have to be in school. And we really have some good data where we can see the overlay of students who have chronic attendance and their achievement. And so if they're at school, they're learning more so than our students that are not attending, of course. Clear communication. I communicated all things around attendance this school year. So really making sure that we were intentional to our schools with memos, what we expected with taking attendance, reporting attendance, and having a clear message, message and expectation so our schools knew how to respond and knew what was expected of them. We put different attendance monitoring systems in place, which I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. And then also tier-three referrals for our students who reached that 36 days of absence, referring them to tier-three for an additional attendance ESP, which we talked about, you guys just talked about a little bit, one specific to attendance. So if you're not coming and the barrier is because of attendance, we're going to wrap around you, try to figure out why it is that you're not coming and put supports in place. So we also learned a lot of lessons last year. I'm sure you guys heard at the different times of year, some rumblings about letters and, you know, communication and too much, and we really listened. You know, we had not talked about attendance for many years. We lived in COVID where we said, if you sniffle, stay home, don't come to school. And the shift back to it's important, yes, if you're sick, you still need to stay home, but we also need you at school, and we're going to be reminding people we need you at school, was shocking because we went from nothing to a lot. We put in place in January, here's an example of the proactive attendance calendar. All families, it's a tier-one notification, that every family for every student gets an attendance calendar. And I think that, I've talked about this before, but I, I'm a working mom. I do, I can't tell you what my kid's attendance was last year. I know they were sick sometimes, they had doctor's appointments sometimes. If you said, this is how much, how many days my daughters missed, I don't know that I could name that for you. So this is just keeping awareness, keeping it in front of families so they can see what that looks like, you know, over the course of the year for their child. We adjusted attendance steps, which I'm going to show you the attendance steps on the next slide. We had a number of extra steps, and we really tried to streamline it and align them differently, which I'll, I'm going to talk about next, so I'm going to hold on that. We've updated our letters. We got feedback that maybe our letters felt too harsh or critical, so we really took a critical lens, looked at the communication, and especially for those early letters, those five and 10-day letters to say, you know, at five days, your child's still meeting our 97% attendance rate, great job. If you, if they miss any more, they're not going to, you know, be at that rate, and so, you know, what, what can we do to support, or thank you for doing that? So just tried to get the message across with some softer language, at least at those beginning of the attendance step letters. We added Parent Square, which we've had Parent Square, but out of the feature where parents could respond in Parent Square when their child was absent. So if a parent forgot to call in to report an absence, they get notification that their child was absent, could respond to that, and then would be reported to the school, which really we did see an increase in parents calling in absences or not calling, responding to absences because they could do that through Parent Square without having to call in, and also for some of our families that don't speak English, because Parent Square, you can respond in whatever your home language is. They could respond in their home language, and we could get that and translate it, which made it easier for all of our families to report attendance. All schools received a dedicated call line for attendance. So now anytime you call one of our schools, there is a press, you know, whatever number it is for the attendance line. And then again, clear communication, as we've, our lessons learned that we need to make sure that we're communicate and that we're also transparent with our community and families. So here are the updated attendance steps that we put into place in January and that also are in place for next year. One thing I want to point out is really, the, the three first letters happened at day five, day 10, and day 15. And we were intentional about that because those equate to weeks of school missed. So if you miss five days, you've missed one week of school. If you've missed 10 days, you've missed two weeks of school, three, not, uh, missed 10 days, uh, two weeks of school. If you miss 15 days, you've missed three weeks of school. So in that, those letters to families, it, that feels different than, oh, you've missed seven days or you've missed nine days. We can really say, your child now has missed one week of school this year. Your child's missed two weeks of school. The, starting at day 18 or really 15 and beyond is where you see some more intensity and, you know, it's, it is a parent's responsibility through Indiana Code to have their students come to school, and so we need, we need them to be at school. So you'll see some of the intensity shift kind of later in those steps after students have missed three or more weeks of school. Rowie, Rowie was new for us this year. Some of what the pain that we heard from our community took place around when we started or turned on Rowie. So it wasn't set to go right at the beginning of the school year. It was ready to go in September. People started sending a zillion letters, and then when we made the adjustment again, that happened. So we're starting off this school year right away with this intervention in place. And the principals have a dashboard. And the principals have a dashboard, and this, Rowie provides lots of different data. So not only when kids, when we need to notify different attendance steps, identifying barriers, what days of school, you know, is more missed. So I can say that, you know, our, you know, if we have a e-learning day, for example, those are typically lower attendance than, you know, our other days of the week, Fridays or Mondays. A principal can really dig into a calendar and look and say, you know, "This is when we are struggling with attendance," and can target certain interventions, competitions, incentives to help increase those numbers. And this, Rowie will dig down to specific students, so we can pull attendance reports with interventions by student as well. So if you look at really the research around attendance and what we learned this past year is that relationships and acknowledgement is what can have the most impact on attendance. Our schools that had the higher percentages are the ones that were really intentional about building relationships, having incentives, having competitions around attendance, and not necessarily perfect attendance. Kids are going to be sick, they're going to miss school, but around improved attendance, Pleasant Run was an example, they gave out tickets for days, if you were on time and at school for a week, you got a ticket, then the next week you got to turn in for something. It was maybe a hat day or Bring a Stepped Animal to School Day. The picture down here is a attendance extended recess time that they had at Hawthorne. Stony Brook, we saw great growth there. They, for their fifth graders, if their students met collectively, so that group contingency, if they met a certain percent of attendance rate, so if fifth grade had 95% attendance, the next day, they got to sit wherever they wanted in the cafeteria for lunch, which if we know kids that are that age, they want to sit with their friends, they saw decreased discipline because kids were sitting where they wanted to, they saw an increase of attendance. Mr. Davis had to increase that percent that they were working towards a number of times because that was being so successful. Acknowledging students when they're absent. If we're not there, we want people to notice that we weren't there, and acknowledging students when they come back from being absent and being missed, rather than, "I was not here and nobody noticed that I wasn't here." We had some schools that had different, lots of different attendance competitions, March Madness, and then individual family support. We have some great stories of our family engagement liaisons working directly with our families to provide support so students could get to school and be successful. So a couple of new things for next school year. We've added another way that parents can report absences. So they can call in on the phone, they can report to the Parent Square message or respond to the Parent Square message. Parent View, which is what parents get into to look at grades, to look at test scores. Now they will also be able to go in and report absences in there. So there's a button that they can, up to two weeks in advance, say, "Hey, my child's going to be absent," and we're hoping that that gets parents in there. They can also set alerts for things like grades, discipline, attendance as well. So our family engagement liaisons have that information and are sharing that with families. Our teacher attendance process, so missing attendance, when we're looking at all of our data, is something that we are always looking to increase and decrease, we want to decrease missing attendance. How our system was set up before was that if a teacher could take attendance for a whole class, and they might overlook somebody when they're scrolling down, and then they have missing attendance for a student. So we have changed some things in our system, so now we can't save until attendance has been taken for all students to hopefully clean up some of those data processes. Our Student Success Handbook, which you guys approved a couple of months ago, we added a lot more with attendance, has our attendance steps, again, just trying to be transparent to our community and families. We're not trying to surprise you when you get a five or a 10-day letter, we're just being upfront with that from the beginning. The proactive calendars are going to continue, and then an increased focus on our Rowie data. If students aren't coming to school, we want to make sure that we're responding quickly and not letting them miss more days while we're waiting to, you know, provide intervention and response. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank two different teams. I met twice a week with our district attendance team, we met weekly, and then we had a tier-three attendance team that consisted of these people, and so really James and I were together twice a week for the whole year to look at the current attendance status, technology, you know, systems and support, and also students who were referred for tier three. So every student who was referred for tier three, we looked at those students individually, looked at their siblings, what supports did they have, what barriers are they having, and how are we going to respond to those. So all of these people have put in, besides, in addition to our building leaders and teachers and APs and counselors, these two teams really made a lot happen, so I want to make sure to highlight and thank them. But at this time, I am happy to take any questions you have about attendance. The district attendance team met weekly up until about spring break, and now we meet every other week. The tier-three attendance team meets every week. Yep?
Allison, I just appreciate.
Oh, right, it's on it over there.
I'm sorry. I just appreciate everything. I just want to say, it was very intentional with every school spotlight that they shared their attendance data. I think next year, I think I would like to see that maybe to carry through, because I think it's an important thing to always remember when we're trying to raise our numbers back up, because we were at 93, 94 before COVID, and just now rebounding back, I'd love to see our numbers back there again.
Yeah, attendance is a focus again this year for all of our schools. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being creative on how to address your letters to parents, because that's really important. I think that made them want to cooperate.
Yeah, I mean, can't make everybody happy, but we can respond when we get feedback and adjust, and it was a learning year for us, and it still is. We're learning what works and where we need to get better and grow, so. Great, thanks.
Hey, thank you, Allison, that was great.
No, we do not have any.
Next on the agenda, well, we don't have any action items, so next on the agenda is, we do have Dr. Hanson honoring Shirley Dorsey at the MCR C library. Dr. Hanson.
Good evening, Board. It's my pleasure to bring to you tonight for discussion, an opportunity to honor Shirley Dorsey, who is a champion on many levels. As many of you know, Shirley was a longtime employee at Morehead Community, Morehead Elementary, and then when it closed in 2009, went over to Sunny Heights. Her second advocacy that she really has a strong passion for is reading. Many of you participated in her reading program that she continues to do at Sunny Heights. So this is a pleasure for me to discuss tonight, the opportunity to honor her by naming a library at Morehead Community Resource Center after her. They have transformed Room 16 into a community library, and Shirley has been working tirelessly along with other helpers to get that library in a place for our community to enjoy. If you've not had a chance to get over there, I would highly recommend it. It's a beautiful space, it's going to be a beautiful space. So tonight, in accordance with our Board Policy 7250, I bring this to you for discussion, and then I would ask for your action at the August board meeting.
I would like to say with great honor and pride that I would really support this. I think that she is a very hard worker. I am so excited about being part of her reading program, and I think it's great. And, you know, this is just a small token of our appreciation, so I want to say congratulations to Ms. Dorsey and just keep up the good work.
If she was here, she would say thank you. Closing comments, and we'll start down here.
Well, as you can see, my necklace, I am a proud Delta, and I want to give a shout out to all my Delta sisters this week. They're downtown now, even as I speak, and, oh my gosh, they had on all white today, and it was just hundreds and hundreds of Deltas, and they look so good in their white. So maybe if you were downtown, you might see all these Deltas downtown. So I want to say a special shout out to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And with that, I want to thank everyone for their reports and all the hard work that you're doing, and looking forward to all the hard work you're going to do at the beginning of this school year and throughout the school year. Congratulations for being with us this year, and we just look forward, you know, I'm a positive thinker, so I'm going to say that we're going to have a great year this year. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Kevin.
I would just like to say thank you for all the work that you've done and all the great reports, and just listening to all the questions that were raised and the things that we're doing, it brings to mind how our job is twofold in that we also have to educate parents, how they are a central part of this and their role in this, and not assume that just like many of us are parents, you don't come into this world knowing how to be a parent, and they don't come into this as being a parent, they don't know their role as how they are part of the education system. So if we get more creative in our ways through attendance and tracking and scores and all the information that they need to help them, because a lot of things are assumed, and anything we can do to, again, educate the parents along the way, and I think that way, as the Warren family grows, we're one successful family. Thank you.
Julie.
I want to thank everybody for everything you've done. You have just a few days left before the onslaught starts, so I guess get some rest now and let's get ready for it. And I'm going to put a plug in for PTA, because after Kevin talked about parents and being involved and knowing stuff, PTA is a great way to get involved at your school and to know what's going on. You get to meet your administrator every month because they're usually part of that meeting, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
LaShawna. Closing comments.
Well, as I'm catching up with the technology, thank you, President Dorsey. I just want to say, I just ditto everything that Ms. Gloria, Mr. Kevin, Ms. Julie has said. I am also very proud of our staff that assisted at registration. The lines were wrapped around the school. Kudos to the staff who assisted with reaching out to our families, like, it was super long, which was a good problem to have. We have, it was a great response, so I'm just excited, looking forward to the great things. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for allowing innovation and thinking outside of the box to help remove some of those barriers for our scholars and our families, and let's get geared up, everybody. We have a great staff, and I'm like Ms. Gloria, I am looking forward to this year for us to grow, go higher and higher and higher. Thank you for everything that you've done, thank you for the great reports and all the information that was provided.
Terry.
I ditto everyone else as well. I think it was well said, Kevin is looking through that lens. Reports were awesome. Thank you for this one page handout. Noticed some differences already that I saw last year that improved, so just enjoy your last few days before school starts.
Rachel.
I don't know why they let me go last, but thank you. I wanted to say that I attended with Gloria and Howard, the Indiana Black Expos Educator Conference, oh, and Terry, that's right. I sat at a different table because I kind of wandered in. We all sat, and we sat at a lot of tables because Warren Township had the most educators there, which is really the important thing, is that we put our money in our bodies where our mouth is, right? And so we had the largest group of educators at that conference, which I think is just really a wonderful thing for our district. I wanted to share, especially since Julie was plugging PTA, I had the honor of being elected as a board member for National PTA. So I've been going through a lot of orientations, and I have another one next week, and I'm just really excited to look at, to help parents get actively involved in schools and also to start really digging into legislation on the federal level. Like, I know state stuff really, really well, but there's a whole other world out there federally that needs some work. I wanted to shout out Kim, sitting next to me, for her work on the technical corrections for the Nilo policies that did, we had a policy meeting last week, maybe the week before, and that knocked out a big chunk of what we needed to do. There was a lot of like wills to shalls and things like that, so it was really good to get those knocked out, and I wanted to thank her for her hard work in getting those out there that quickly. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.[1786.14]